Okay, we'll have a moment of silent meditation and pledge to the flag.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This meeting of the Montague County Commission Board, it is Wednesday, July 31st, 2024, at 10:00 AM Eastern Standard Time. Let the record reflect that all three commissioners are present. First item on the agenda is consent and approval with our county administrator, Renata McGlore. Good morning, Renata.
Good morning.
You have seventy-two exonnerations for thirty-two thousand, seven hundred and seventy-six dollars and forty-six cents. Five corrected tax statements, five thousand, eight oh two forty minutes for July 24th, 2024. Vouchers, General County, twelve thousand, two forty-sixty-eight. Paul Severance, seventy thousand. Chestnut Ridge Park, two thousand, four sixty-eight ninety-two. Kent Muffley, three thousand, two fifty-one sixty-seven. EMS salary enhancement, one hundred and twenty-five thousand, five eighty-one forty. ARPA, twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred and forty-eight. Purchasing card vouchers, General County, three thousand, one hundred and fifty-three dollars for a voucher total of two hundred and forty-six thousand, four forty-three sixty-seven. We have no budget revisions to approve. Position vacancies for boards and authorities are listed on the website and fiduciary orders for July 31st, 2024.
Okay, a motion to approve the consent, Jen Williams, as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You have a couple additional fiduciary items?
Yes, sir. The first is a petition to appoint the sheriff of Montague County as the administrator of the estate of Carolyn Hagan Jacobs Hampson.
Move to approve the petition to appoint the sheriff as administrator of this estate.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The second one is an objection to a small estate affidavit in the estate, in the estate of Vivian Ritchie.
I would move to deny the petition to, or deny the objection and to allow the appointment to proceed as presented by the clerk.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
This is a case where we have, it appears there are siblings. I'm not sure if they were feuding or just objecting to the way the estate's being handled. At this point, the objection was made to have the sister, the sister Maureen Ritchie filed the, the objection to, what's the Cheryl's appointment as administrator. The way the statute works, any party can come forth thirty days after death to be appointed as administrator. Kind of goes on a first come, first served basis, assuming they're an eligible citizen to, to be appointed. This is what happened where Cheryl did come forward and was appointed as the administrator. So at this point, I see no reason to object to that. There are processes down the line, which she alludes to some of the details of the estate, the objecting party does. So those, there are processes down the line for those objections to be made, so at this time, that's premature. So I don't see any reason at this point to deny the appointment of the administrator as it was.
Okay, so we have a first and a second, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any additional fiduciary items?
No, sir.
Okay. Introduction to new employees, personnel changes, Kenehan Adoption Center.
Uh, yes, sir. We've had a couple of vacant deputy dog warden positions. We're hiring Cody Parker. Effective date is August 1st, tomorrow, thirty-three thousand, five hundred dollars annually and a six-month probationary period.
Move to approve the employee as presented.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any other positions?
Uh, yeah, yesterday afternoon, I got a letter from the chief tax deputy for the sheriff. They are wanting to hire a temporary part-time person, Riley Westman. Start date, July 29th, fifteen dollars an hour. This would be no benefits hourly and temporary.
Move to approve the employee as presented.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any others?
That's it.
Next item on the agenda is comments from the public. We will now open the comments from the public section of the meeting. Any member of the public wishing to be heard, raise their hand. Come forward, provide their name and address and be heard.
Good morning. My name's Louis Scottchul. I live here in Morgantown, West Virginia. Property here in Star City, fourteen forty-four Saratoga Avenue. I come before you as the DBN executor of the estate of Arthur P. Scottchul. I'm mind-boggled. I've got a court order here that states that the January 9, 2006 will is invalid and set aside. That the county commission admitted on April 8, 2009, the administration of the January 9, 2006 last will and testament of Arthur P. Scottchul, found invalid, set aside with prejudice. In order to move forward in this estate, and I brought copies for all of you, because what the county commission has relied upon, the trials and tribunals of this estate, according to West Virginia codes, doesn't exist. It's non-void. Everything about Keith Pappas and John Scottchul's administrations, and according to this order, the honorable judge, Russell Clodges, had to deny the request to appoint me in his court as the administrator, because it's not, it's not, in their jurisdiction, this is jurisdiction of the county commission. So from the date of this order, which was April 8, 2014, this estate has been governed under the estate administration of the January 9, 2006 will. I made you all copies and hope that you will accept them, to look over them, to show exactly the things that took place to deny Keith Pappas and John Scottchul. And it was ordered at the time, I believe, for the county commission to return the estate of Arthur P. Scottchul as it was before this administration administered it to its waste. I need to get some kind of reaction, that we need to sit down and at least give me an hour of your time to show you exactly why I keep coming back to you, without spending any more money going into circuit courts that's going to deny the claim until you fulfill your job, because somebody's in contempt of court here. This court order states that it's non-void. And I hope that you'll accept this, and I got each one of you a copy to review, and then give me a decision so where we can move forward on this and try to relinquish back what was in the estate's assets at the time that it started being administered by the improper administrations of Keith Pappas and John Scottchul. Premature to the will contest's final results, of which was the proper will to record, which in West Virginia code only recognizes one will, only recognizes one administrator to administer the wishes of Arthur P. Scottchul, under whichever provisions are in the proper will. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I give them?
Sure.
Each one of them is a copy, I just twisted them around.
Okay. Do we have anyone else? Good morning.
Morning.
Hi, guys, how you doing?
Fine.
Good. I don't know how many of you watched last night's city council. Oh, I'm sorry, 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 that's right. Mary Ann Foles, eight twenty-eight Bloody Run Road. Don't know how many of you watched last night's city council meeting? It was lively, probably the liveliest I have seen. It continued outside. There was almost a fight broken out. So it was, you know, the homeless topic in our county continues to be a huge, huge issue. I know I saw on the agenda today that you all are handing out some money from the opioid settlement. And, you know, I asked the city council, the city council, same thing I've asked you guys before. I really think that you could get a lot of value by having a public forum. As I'm out talking to people, there are really some good ideas out there. I actually think I have a few good ideas. But I don't think they're coming toward, they're not coming forward to you all, and they're not coming forward to the city. But if you had a public forum in the evening where people could come and share ideas, not come and complain, because we've heard a lot of that, but come and actually share some ideas on what they think we could do to solve both our homeless problem as well as the, you know, the drug problem. I'll just throw out one, yeah, I lived in Cincinnati for over thirty years. And one of the things we had in our jail system was a section where if you were arrested for, for drugs or for theft or whatever it was, and you had an addiction issue, there was a section of the jail that you could, that you would go to. And that's where you would be held versus being in the general population, and you would get some assistance to try to get you off of drugs. So we could try something like that here. And there are, there are other things that we could do. I still think we could consolidate money between the city and the county, or the other counties, and put together a, a multi-bed facility for folks who can't afford to go to recovery, to try to get at least some of these folks help. And then I, I know, we also know, I'm sure you guys know, that probably at least two-thirds of the people that are going into our shelters today don't live in our county. They may not even live in our state, but we're paying for it. And I think that we need to look at ways to address that. I don't know how you do it, that I don't have an idea for. But there's a lot of good ideas out there, a lot of smart people. I've heard people say, you know, if the city and the county aren't going to come up with solutions, the public's just going to have to. And, and that's not what we want. We want everybody working together. So that's my plea for today. I'll probably be back next week, so we'll see you guys. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and close the public portion of the meeting. Next item on the agenda is grants. Do we have any regular grants? Okay, none. Correspondence.
The Bo Park, fourth quarter Parks and Recreation Levy Report.
Okay.
Been received.
Okay, do we have any others?
Uh, no.
Commissioner Renata?
No.
No.
I did receive a postcard from.
Oh, from 4H.
4H, just. It didn't really have a message, it had some cute pictures of scenery.
It was that.
Appreciate that. I'm not even sure who it's from to designate for the record, but it was a.
Can I get that from you?
What's that?
Can I get that from you?
Yeah, it was on their stationery, and a cute little postcard, so we appreciate our 4H campers and, and of course, the director of that program, Becca Fenton-Clark, for having such a successful summer.
Unfinished business, there's none. New business, to consider funding requests by the Stewartstown Community Council regarding funding assistance from the community center expenditure account in the amount of ten thousand, one hundred and nine dollars and eleven cents. What's the will of the commission?
Move to approve.
Second, let me just explain mine.
Any discussion?
Yeah, go ahead. Oh, I thought you were going to.
No, go ahead. You have the specific.
That's fine. No, I don't, if you want to explain it, Sean, I'm.
Yeah.
Well, this is the, they sent us a request.
Right, yeah.
For a flooring project. And.
It's part of our regular fund for community centers.
This comes out of our dollars that we put aside overall for all the community centers.
Sorry.
And Stewartstown Community Council has been a very good partner in meeting us halfway and has done a lot with the few dollars that we have them, we've given them. And this particular request is to, to deal with a few of the issues with the flooring. Obviously, if you have a lot of individuals that are elderly, it's become an issue where the floors become worn in, and they're worried about people tripping and falling. So that's all I, that's all I recall. Go ahead, Renata.
Do you want to, are you, are you approving, are you suggesting to approve the request in full? The ten thousand, one oh nine eleven?
We had talked about five thousand dollars, if I'm correct, because that's what we've been doing in the past, but I.
Well, Commissioner, that's what, that's what you said, but I don't know that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd made the motion, I mean, you can amend the motion, or I'd made the motion to approve it in full, but we can certainly entertain an amendment if that's your request, but.
If I'm a little clueless, I think this was talked about when I was.
You're right, that's why, yeah. The only reason why I would say five thousand is that's what we have done in the past, and it's fifty percent.
Well, the only thing, the only reason I say that is because you have thirty thousand dollars in that line item. And you've already pledged five of that to Brookhaven. And then I think.
I would like to amend it to five thousand dollars.
Off the top of my head.
Okay, I'll accept the amendment.
Yeah.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor for the funding in the amount of five thousand dollars to the Stewartstown Community Council?
Aye.
Aye. Sorry, we forgot you were not here.
That was.
Consider for approval appointments to the Kent Muffley Advisory Board and the Montague County Building Commission.
You've already mentioned her name once today, so she may show up later. Becca Fenton-Clark has been serving on the, the board. We haven't had any other applicants, and her term had expired. So I inquired with her whether or not she wanted to be reappointed to another term, and she said yes.
Becca's an essential member of the board, I serve on that board. Being her involvement in 4H and the camps and, you know, theme out there of 4H service. She's definitely an essential member, I would have moved to approve her appointment to the board.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And those are three-year terms.
Right.
The second one is for the building commission. Again, Kent Polly has served for many, many years. We've had this on our website for a few weeks now and haven't had any other applicants. So would you like to reappoint him to another term?
I'd move to appoint Mr. Polly to the, back for another term to the board.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Consideration to approve applications to the, for the Montague County opioid settlement funds.
Move, move to approve the, we'll go into detail, but move to approve the, the awards as had been discussed.
Okay, I'll go ahead and ask our.
Second.
Grants coordinator to come up and provide some background detail.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Okay, so for the opioid funding applications, we received a total of eighteen applications. And the amount requested from the entirety of them was one million, nine hundred, eighty-eight thousand, forty-five dollars and twenty-four cents. Of those eighteen, the following list is the ones that you all, after you guys had reviewed the applications, the ones that were recommended. Aspire Services Center, Casa for Kids, Lawrence Wish Addiction Triage Center, Liberia Inc., Mylan Puchkar Health Right, Montegalia County Child Advocacy Center, Montegalia County Health Department, Montegalia County Public Defender Office, Montegalia Emergency Medical Services, Morgantown Area Youth Services Project, Morgantown Saber Living, West Virginia University Research Corporation, and Wise Path Recovery Center. So of those thirteen are the ones that have been recommended for funding.
And Commissioner Bloom had, had requested that we take the Morgantown Area Youth Services Project, and we'll do a separate motion on that. So for, for that one.
Oh.
We're not considering that one, we'll do that separately?
I'll amend my motion to remove that entity from the approval, and then we'll leave it open for another approval.
Second, thank you.
Okay. So did, I'm sorry.
So the total amount that is approved should be approved of six hundred, twenty-six thousand, nine hundred dollars.
So we have a motion to approve in a second?
I'd like to have a little discussion.
Okay?
Yeah, just clarification. I really want to congratulate my fellow commissioners. We have been working on this for months. What we did was set up a process similar to what Kenehan County did, but we modified it. And I want to give Colleen a great deal of credit. As we announced the program, we did this, there are no public forums, that is not what is needed. What is needed are specific programs that we can move forward on, that the community has to offer. And we had eighteen exceptional applications. I know, and I know the other commissioners spent hours, I think it was close to thirty hours, on reviewing these huge applications. And what we tried to do is come up with a program to help the drug addiction and the homeless problem in our community. A lot of these funds will go to some housing, to aftercare programs, to more counselors. It is, it's a really eclectic group that I'm really proud of. And this was our first phase of doing it. So these were the ones that we came up with. One of the concerns, and I'm glad, you know, Ms. Foles mentioned about last night, I did watch the program, and it was an embarrassment. What they did to the city council members was atrocious. It, it got very disruptive. So that's what worries me about having a public forum, so only one side comes out. So again, I really want to thank the process that we went through, and I look forward to continuing this and offering new suggestions and new ideas and applications. And I, and I do want to thank Ms. Coon for working and putting up with us and asked questions and getting the information.
And I do want to restate the, the motion. So this motion is to approve the funding to the following organizations, the following twelve organizations. Aspire, Casa for Kids, Lawrence Wish, Liberia, Morgantown, or Mon County Health Department, Mylan Puchkar Health Right, Mon County Child Advocacy Center, MONE MS, Montague County Public Defender Corp., Morgantown Saber Living, West Virginia University Research Corp., Wise Path Recovery Center, in the total of five hundred, sixty-six thousand, nine hundred.
Right, thank you. I'll just echo Commissioner Bloom's sentiments to thank Ms. Coon for all her work in setting up the, the portal that we worked through, and, and again, in dealing with us, mainly Tom. On a daily basis, with these petitions, they were very extensive. We take this responsibility very seriously. We received over a million dollars to disperse, but didn't find it necessary to simply disperse it all just because this was the first wave.
Yes.
We diligently went through these applications, made sure they fit within the, with the purpose that the funds were for. And I feel we've come up with some pretty good decisions that should help a lot of people. And we still have a pool of money there for going forward. Then we will be announcing at a later time how we'll make those funds available for, for more grant requests down the line. But it was a tough process, and it was starting from scratch. And I appreciate Commissioner Bloom worked very hard in, in setting up the process with, with Colleen to, to get this going and how we were going to apply these funds. So with that, thank you both for all the hard work, too, so.
I echo all of your comments. It was a very, very smooth process once we got it set up, and appreciate all your efforts, Colleen. And we, we are only giving, at this point, we're only giving away sixty percent of the dollars that we have. And we'll be getting yearly allotments, so we're, we're just being very judicious with these dollars. We, we looked over the proposals and areas where we thought that we would be funding something that already exists. We, we pulled back in areas where we were looking for unique, unique instances where people could do, do things differently. And also, we're, we're rewarding areas where organizations are successful in what they're doing, and they just needed more, more bandwidth to continue their mission. So it was a, it was a very time-consuming process, and I appreciate everybody's effort to that end. So we have a first and a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Now I will entertain a motion to dispense with the thirteenth applicant that we, we awarded. That would be Morgantown Area Use Services Project.
Move to approve the funding for that organization from the opioid funding.
Okay, and I would second that, and that amount, we have to single them out because they're by themselves, but that amount is sixty thousand dollars for that one organization. So, which brings the total amount to six thousand, or six hundred, twenty-six thousand, nine hundred. So we have a first, I'll, I'll second that. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Please, for the record.
And I abstain.
Make note that Commissioner Bloom has stained from that vote because he's involved with that board. And Commissioner Bloom had to abstain from all of conversations regarding that application.
He did.
All right, anything else regarding the opioid settlement funds? I think that's it. Okay. Consideration of engagement letter with TAF, Stetanus, and Hollister LLP to provide follow-on services for Montague County Broadband Development, Deployment Project. What this was, is we've had a longstanding agreement with Ice Miller. They were the entity that was awarded the contract to do the, our comprehensive broadband plan. There was follow-on work in that, and their, their follow-on part was to provide legal services as we, as we negotiated the, the waters, trying to get to where we were going to actually be deploying broadband. And the, the lead individual now works for a different law firm, and he's been, him and his assistant have been really the only two people that we utilized. So it just makes sense to continue utilizing him to, to, and his organization as we work on execution of the agreement that we have with Comcast. So this would be follow-on agreement through the end of the project. And this letter is the engagement letter, just so officially he can continue providing that support as needed, so.
Move to approve the president signing and sending the engagement letter as presented.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Consider for approval an additional contribution to the Visit Mountaineer Country CVB for the Mon County Tourism Advancement Fund regarding the sponsorship proposal by the Mountain East Conference.
Move to approve.
Proudly second.
Okay. Would, and you would like to go first, or?
Well, just, we were contacted by Reed Amos from the Mountain East Conference, and he saw the facilities that Mon County Commission works with and Mylan Park, and thought it would be a good marriage, I could call it, to have the track conference for five years be at the Mylan Park, Mylan Park area. And also, he's looking at swimming and softball. And the best part of it was when we contacted WVU and the school system, the days are Sunday, Monday, and Tuesday, which does not affect anything. And at the same time, also, the conference is a big West Virginia conference, which we thought would be a great destination site to tell the other people in West Virginia what is going on here. But we don't want the credit, we are looking to fund at the CVB, and they're going to be able to get a lot of, not only publicity from it, but also, I think this is a tremendous addition to what we've been trying to do, the three county commissioners, to promote our facilities, and I'll leave it with that and let someone else continue.
Well, just echoing the sentiment, CVB does a great job of attracting groups and entities to come into our county and utilize the facilities that we have all across the county. The, the track and the aquatic center out there are draws to organizations, not just from the state, from other regions of, of other states as well. And every time someone comes in, they stay in a hotel, those are, those are dollars that are coming into the county, specifically with our, with the, with the lodging tax, it comes directly back to the county to, to continue with the programs and then the things that we do. So we appreciate the work of the CVB and look forward to having MEC and any other conference that wants to entertain, bringing their tournaments here. It's a great thing, and it's utilizing facilities that are there, and we welcome them and appreciate all the efforts to bring them here.
And I'll quickly read the press release that CVB sent out this morning to all of us. This is a Mountain East press release. For immediate release, MEC Outdoor Track and Field Championships to be staged at Mylan Park. Visit Mountaineer Country CVB to, to be MEC corporate partner. The Mountain East Conference today announced a corporate partnership agreement with the Visit Mountaineer Country Convention and Visitors Bureau that will bring the MEC Outdoor and Track, Track and Field Championships to Mylan Park and Morgantown beginning the spring of 2025. Visit Mountaineer CVB will serve as a title sponsor for the MEC Outdoor Track and Field Championships. This partnership and sponsorship commitment was made possible by the Montague County Tourism Advancement Fund with support from the Montague County Commission, and will make Mylan Park the home of the MEC Outdoor Track and Field Championships through 2029. This innovative relationship with Visit Mountaineer Country CVB is a definite win-win for all involved. The Mountain East Conference is thrilled to have the opportunity to stage its MEC Track and Field Championships in the finest track and field competition facility in the region at Mylan Park, said MEC Commissioner Reed Amos. In addition to attracting student athletes and fans to the region through this partnership, the MEC's digital platforms will allow Visit Mountaineer Country CVB to market and position themselves to the MEC's twenty-three con- to market and position themselves to the MEC's 23 conference championship sports to create even more mutual value in this partnership. The combined elements of this partnership will greatly enhance the opportunity to create a first-class experience for our member institutions, coaches, fans, and most importantly, our track and field student athletes. Along with fellow MEC corporate partners, Visit Mountaineer Country CVB will be featured in MEC broadcasts for television on Sportsnet Pittsburgh and the Mid-Atlantic Sports Network during all MEC championship events on MountainEast.TV and the MEC's OTT apps, through leveraging marketing assets and MEC championship sites and through the league's digital platforms. Visit Mountaineer Country Convention and Visitors Bureau can be more excited to forge a relationship with the MEC, said Susan Riddle, President and CEO of the Visit Mountaineer Country CVB. Our world-class facilities at Mylan Park and our mountaineer hospitality are what attracted the MEC to Mountaineer Country, and we will continue to strengthen our relationship well into the future. The initial year at Mylan Park for the MEC outdoor track and field championships is set for April 27 through 29, 2025. We are confident that our state-of-the-art surface and high-quality facilities will provide the MEC athletes a great opportunity to pursue their personal best, and that Mylan Park will provide a tremendous experience for the athletes, said Jennifer Lanhart, Director of Aquatics and Track at Mylan Park. So, one of, I notified the Juma members this morning that we were approving this funding for the Mon County Tourism Advancement Fund that would allow this agreement to go forward. And I also let them know that behind the scenes, there's, they, they're, the MEC is also looking at bringing their swimming and diving championships here. There's only two member schools in the MEC that actually have a swimming team, so they actually combined with another league.
So, expanded.
But our facilities far surpass the facilities that they use for that competition. So, they are looking, they have a lot more other things they have to deal with. They have to work with another conference, but they're confident that they can, doing this five years, can get two or three years of the, on a rotating basis of the swimming championships here. So, again, to be a further win-win, and all these dates have been vetted to make sure that none of them conflict with the use of the facility by our local athletes and corporate partners.
Which was important.
So, it, the way the dates slotted in, it worked perfectly with the WVU track. It will work perfectly with all the swimming events. It worked perfectly with the, the high school teams that utilize the facility. As a matter of fact, I had a member of the track community, a prominent member of the track community reach out to me earlier in the week and say, "I heard you guys are working on this agreement." And I sheepishly said, "Yeah." I said, "Is that a good thing?" And he said, "Absolutely. It's a very, very good thing for our, for our area." So, I think this is a, we, we overuse that word, win-win, but this is a good opportunity. And, and Visit Mountaineer Country will get so much exposure across the state and across the region as a result of this, that the value is certainly worth the value that we have committed to fund the TA, the Tourism Advancement Fund to cover this. So, so we have a first and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Okay. Any other new business?
No, sir.
Okay. Reason I thought we had something else. Reports from, reports from elected officials? I'm sorry, or department heads?
We're off to that.
All right. Reports from county commissioners. Jeff?
Thank you. A couple of things. First, I'd like to apologize for sort of stumbling through that one new business side, and we, we discussed that a couple of weeks ago in a work session, and with all the work on the opioid, I kind of forgot, to be honest with you, what our exact decision was. So, I appreciate Commissioner Bloom pointing out what we had discussed and decided. We usually don't seem unprepared like that, but we, we did spend an inordinate amount of time on the opioid settlement. So, that being said, I'll move on. I spoke to the circuit clerk, Donna Hidock, the other day, and the plaque has been ordered and is actually in for a commemorative plaque for our former circuit clerk, Jean Friend, commemorating her time as circuit clerk, being the longest tenured elected official in the history of the state of West Virginia. Clerk Hidock will be announcing a ribbon cutting or a plaque hanging at a future date, but just wanted to put that along that it's happening. Proud to announce that the Casey Cabin is complete at Chestnut Ridge Park and is in use, available for rent. So, that's been a great project. I thank our maintenance crew and construction crew for, and our superintendent for putting that together and building that thing literally from the ground up, as we ended up having to replace the entire cabin. It's a great addition to the park, and just goes to further extend the projects that are being funded by the levy that keep coming in, that our citizens keep approving for our parks, and it's a great, it's a great thing for them. One comment on, on the comments that were made regarding the county commission addressing the homeless issue in the county, I take issue with that we haven't done enough or haven't done anything to, to help abate that. We, in addition to recently authorizing funding of $150,000 for Bartlett House, which is, in fact, a homeless shelter, that was a major step to secure that facility and make sure that that would be available going forward with Catholic charities coming in and taking over for that. That's a significant step to those that need housing and are willing to follow the rules that Bartlett House has in order to be housed there. For those that don't want to follow those rules and utilize that housing, I feel that the funding that we authorized today for the opioid settlement funds may very well go a long way towards assisting those individuals towards treatment for issues that may be reasons, core reasons why they don't want to follow the rules that Bartlett House has for housing. There are treatment programs, there are, there are intervention programs, there are, there are programs in there for mothers of, or children of addicted parents to assist. It runs a wide gamut. As Commissioner Sakura mentioned, these petitions that we receive were very innovative and wide-ranging, trying to attack these very issues. So, I just, you know, we, we work on it as best we can with the authority that we have and with funding that we feel can help the matters that are, they're at the very core of what that issue is. So, that's all I have to say about that, as far as I'm able to say. And that's all I've got. I've spoken enough for one day. So, go ahead, Tom.
Basically, yesterday, I attended on behalf of the county commission, the downtown drug and safety meeting sponsored at Morgantown Area Partnership, and there were about 40 individuals who, if we're going to make a difference, they're the individuals that are going to make a difference. I am pleased to say that we have four objectives that we are looking to do in the next several weeks, and the number one is educating the public and what is going on. So, I'll give you more information. As soon as I get the outline of what happened, I'll be able to share it with you. So, I appreciate attending there. Second, I was going to do this under correspondence, but I felt it needed to be separate, and I really am doing this because I think Sean Sakura, it was sent to me, but I think Sean deserves the credit here. Just wanted to let you know that Comcast Construction in Higgins is completed. We got hooked up yesterday, and it's working great. The Comcast employee that did our install said that anyone, not just business and people who did the original legwork that is in line, can come on and get installed. Comcast will install it by calling them and getting an appointment. Thanks for helping move this along and getting high-speed internet available to a bunch of us out in Higgins. And I, and that is what you had always said you wanted to start. That is the beginning of the ring. This is the beginning of the approach that is going on out there, and I, and I do appreciate that. And that is it.
And so, a little revisionist history there, Commissioner Bloom. You were the one that brought the Higgins community to this commission, and they came to this commission and proffered the idea that the commission would help, because absent, absent anything else, people will find a way to roll up their sleeves and figure out how they can be connected. And that's what they, all the, all the credit goes to that neighborhood who banded together, worked with, worked with Comcast, and then they reached out to you and then came into this meeting. And then, as a result of public comments in this meeting, Comcast said, "We'll fund that."
Yes.
And that began, you know, so that was a great result of that, but, you know, all the, all the credit goes to, you know, you bringing them, having the forethought to bring them to the right people, bring them to this meeting so that they can make those comments. And again, I forwarded that information to Comcast and told them I was very appreciative of their efforts and made sure that they were aware of it. So, thank you for forwarding that on. This is a little bit of, it's been a little bit of a slow week coming back from vacation. Last Thursday, I had Mon County Health Department, and then on Friday, we had staff reports and a special work session. Monday, I had lunch with a constituent. Today's a regular day. Tomorrow, we have our HVAC RFP pre-bid conference, and then Friday, we have staff reports, and then I have a broadband call. Next week, I have another lunch with constituents on Monday. In general, I, again, I want to express my thanks to staff, especially Colleen and all the efforts you did on the grant, opioid grants process. Tom, all the efforts that you did. It was a big relief, at least, getting that first batch of funds, grant applications approved. And I'm sure everybody around this office is appreciative of that, because, Tom, you were, you were a real taskmaster over the last couple of months, pushing the process out, pushing, you know, pushing the envelope as far as getting this done. So, I appreciate all your efforts to that, to that regard. The applications were, it was a lot of information in there and a lot that we had to review and things we had to consider. And that's not the end of the line. There's also still, you know, people can apply at the state level, and there were some large projects that we thought maybe they'd be better served at the state level. But we, everything we did, we was, each commissioner independently reviewed those applications and provided their comments and their reasoning in the system, and then we sat down and worked through those. And for the most part, we were very consistent as far as our thought process in each one of them. And each one of these that we've approved, we unanimously approved. So, that was a lot of work, just kind of getting together and working to that end. In regards to, I echo Commissioner Arnett's comments about the, the county not being involved in the homeless process. There's just a different, different, a difference of philosophy. When the whole thing came up about the Bartlett House, and, you know, we were, we were being, people were attending our meetings and saying, "You got to get together. We got to have a joint meeting between the city and the county." And the commission wants to be involved. We want results, but we don't want a sideshow. And we worked that, that process out pretty quick, just getting, you know, delegating members of the commission and delegating members of the city to get together and figure out what we needed to do. And in over a month's time, that, that problem had been resolved, and with both the city and the county coming to the table with significant funding to, to fund the solution. I think that sometimes gets lost, is everybody really wants to see the sideshow and not, not really focusing on, okay, so what's the root causes? What's, what's, how can we actually be part of this solution, and how can we move this forward without all, without all the theatrics? So, the commission has, is very involved in all these, all these communications. We just prefer to be more tactical about it. So, but I do, I do, I'll push back on anybody that says we're not doing our share to help, especially with our, our regular grant funding process, where we fund over $1 million on our general fund to all these organizations that are doing good for our citizens, and our willingness to step up to the plate when all these, when all these crises have come up. You know, we're certainly at the table. So, anyhow, I don't have anything else.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.